Good evening and welcome to the Putnam Valley Board of Education Work Session/Business Meeting of April 2, 2020. Please join me as we pledge our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And before we move on to the rest of the agenda, for those of you in the Putnam Valley School community, you may have heard the very sad news that Mr. Frank Reali passed away today. Mr. Reali served as a Board of Education member for a number of years. Much longer than that, he was a faculty member and was teacher and colleague to several of the people that are in our meeting today. For all of us, he was at the very least a good neighbor. So, and just was always doing everything he possibly could to make the world a better place for the students and youth of Putnam Valley. So I would like us all to join me in a brief moment of silence as we reflect on a great man's great life. And thank you very much. Our condolences go out to his family and everybody touched by his loss. Moving on to the next. I'd like resolve to approve the minutes of the Board of Education meeting of March 19, 2020.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstained? Minutes approved. Okay, and we are now going to turn it over to our one presentation of the evening. I guess our last Board of Education meeting before we adopt the budget for the 2021 school year.
Okay, so I'll speak to that before I even put it up on the screen. I'll share it, but as of right now, that adoption of that budget is more than likely, well, it is postponed. Our budget is not going to be held on, our budget vote is not going to be held on May 19th as all schools across the state are not having their budget vote that day. It's been moved probably into June. We have not been given a date for that. So I'm going to talk about events that happened yesterday and over the past, you know, couple of weeks since our last meeting. So I'm going to share tonight's presentation. I'm sorry, it's not coming up right now. Let me know when you can see it. Are you able to see it now?
No.
No.
Not yet.
Here it comes.
Here it comes.
There it is.
All right.
Yep. Yes.
Right, so start off by saying, as I just did, the 2021 school budget vote has been postponed. We only know that it's been pushed into the month of June at this time and there is no further guidance on when or that will be or when we need to have our new adoption deadline by. So the adoption deadline that we currently had in place is also postponed. So statewide, yesterday, like I said, the vote was moved. Our construction project will still continue to go on during this closure. And there are safety protocols in place, so I know people are seeing that going on in the community and maybe wondering, you know, we're doing that, but we're not in school. So that is something that the state has allowed to continue pending, again, the safety protocols that are in place. The construction project, I just want to mention, is not part of the 2021 budget and that's why I brought it up. It has its own budget that cannot be spent on anything else. So it's independent of the school budget. New state aid projections were released and they're still not final. The state is going to be revisiting those figures, I believe, at the end of April and giving us an update at that point as to what we can use for state aid at that point. And if it's final, we don't know if it will be. So the categories of state aid that are changing based on yesterday's figures are going to be our foundation aid, which is the big number in our aid that we get. It's the largest amount of aid. The Bozey's Aid, which is an expense-driven aid and our building aid that really has no effect on our total revenue at this time. So, so we've been given figures that are astronomically different than what we were given in January in the executive budget. Our building aid, again, if there's an adjustment there, it could affect our tax levy cap, but then it would have the opposite effect on the total aid received. So the net effect there could be zero. The Bozey's Aid, again, is an expense-based aid and that can change if we spend less, which at this time, school isn't closed. Operations are closed, things are closed down. We are probably going to spend less on Bozey's than we had originally planned because things are not happening the way they normally would be. And so therefore, the aid that we generate that would come in next year would be less than what we're anticipating. So again, that figure in the budget will be changed from what we anticipated. So our foundation aid is the big number that I spoke about and it is a big number. We're going to be short $586,000 in aid if the numbers stick that came out yesterday. So really, the budget that was presented a couple of weeks ago at the meeting is kind of irrelevant at this point and we need to go back to, you know, the drawing board and come up with a new revenue and new expenditures and see where we can go through the budget and try to figure out how we're going to make it work. So we're going to be working on that. And again, to make up a difference like that, it could mean cuts to programs. It could mean cuts to personnel or both. We may need to use some additional reserves to balance the budget. And again, it's possibly a combination of both of those things. So as of April 1st, that's yesterday, these were the aid categories. Again, I just broke them down. We were going to get 5.6 million. It was immediately changed to 5.1 million, which is the exact amount of foundation aid that we got last year. So they just reverted back to what they gave us last year, a difference of $547,000. And again, the Bozey's Aid showing a small difference there, but that's only based on what's happened up to this date. So going forward, those expenses again will be less and then we'll end up getting less aid there. And so overall, $586,000 less in state aid to date. So here are some additional things that could happen as a result of this closure and the economic state of New York State and of the United States. I mean, everybody's experiencing the same thing. So business officials got together today, about 40 of us met via Zoom and spoke about the challenges that are ahead of us. So one of the big ones is our interest earnings. The market is down. Hopefully, it's not going to be a long-term situation as it was back in 2006, 2007, 2008. But I think we have to look at those interest earnings as being part of what we're going to earn next year. It's going to affect that. So some of those districts are budgeting at least 20% less than what they originally budgeted in their budget. And all of them were ready to adopt, just as we were. We were ready to adopt with, you know, a few questions and maybe some tweaks here and there, but now they're going to have to all make those changes. So we're going to be really analyzing and reevaluating our revenues overall and having to start from scratch. Our unemployment claims have greatly increased. I mean, I don't know if everybody sees that as a thing for us. I mean, we have employees that are getting paid, right? But we also have substitutes and we have coaches and things like that that are collecting unemployment and they're able to do that. And some of those substitutes, they don't just work in our district, they work in other districts as well. So wherever they worked last, that's the employer who has to pay the unemployment. So we've been getting a lot of that. We're inundated. They're being filed online. I know our payroll clerk is working on that almost every day. There are some bright lights in all of this. We do have, will have a savings remaining from this year because of the closure. You know, some of those savings will be diverted to fund balance, but we're going to need to probably use some of that towards the shortfall in the revenues that we're not getting in state aid. So when this all falls out, then we'll know how we can apply that. Another positive note is that the financial assumptions we made on the bonds for the capital project, those rates are probably going to come in lower. How much lower, I'm not sure. Because we haven't bonded any of that yet. We're borrowing and then the bond comes at the end of the project. So pending the project getting finished this year, we may be able to get a really decent rate on that. And that's about all I have for what I was going to say tonight. Because again, I think this whole situation has got to play itself out. We have to go back to the drawing board and figure out where we are with expenses and revenues in another couple of weeks after we've had time to look at it and get some more information. And if anybody has any questions, we can talk about that now. Or if you want to go over the questions that people have been submitting.
I think the biggest question, I guess, is going to come about would be, where are, what are those savings? And we have figured that out, but where do we look for those savings from this year? Because we talked in the last meeting about bus drivers and the bus company, among other things, things that we're not, that we don't, we're not providing service for. And just where are we thinking? Or if it's too soon to tell at this point, where do we, at least what areas are we seeing the savings? And obviously, we're not using heating oil as much, et cetera.
Yeah, I think there's going to be savings in all different areas of the budget and you're absolutely right. That isn't something we could, we could know, especially when we don't know how long school is going to be closed. We could give an estimate or come up with an estimate up until April 15th of what that number would be. Certainly, things start to kick in like, you know, lighting, air conditioning, heating oil, substitute pay, security. There's all kinds of expenses that we experience every day, every week that once we, I wish we had a better idea of when that date was that was going to end or begin, if school was going to come back in session or not. And we don't. So I think, you know, we're going to have to sit down and make some assumptions. But until April 15th rolls around and we really know that either we're coming back or we're not, we're going to be stuck for knowing the answers to those questions. And until the end of April, when they revisit the state aid estimates, we won't know what we're going to be short for next year either.
Right, so I think that's our first step is we're going to have to come up with a different metrics in terms of if we were to come back on the beginning of May, what potential savings could we have incurred from this spring? What if we come back in June? What if we don't come back at all? To give us some numbers to work off of. Now, we've sort of already been encouraged to wait in terms of before making any budgetary decisions because there is sort of this check-in period at the end of April and another one at the end of May, another one at the end of June where those state aid numbers could change more. Then I would love to think that they could possibly go up as part of their equation. But I think the reality is, is if they go anywhere, they're going to go down. So I think we have to, we've been encouraged. Obviously, we have to start having these conversations now and explore opportunities to decrease our expenses. But really, we need to see what happens on April 30th when they do that first check-in to see, to really get a realistic look of what the number is going to be that we're going to need to meet to move forward. The other thing I wanted to throw out there is, I know there's been some creative reporting. Several people shared an article with me today and it was titled something to the extent of "State Aid Stays Flat or Remains Flat", or something of the sort. So people got really excited that they read it to mean as if state aid was not changing. But what they were missing is the fact that it's not changing from what it was the previous year. And even though our expenses obviously increased, our contractual expenses increased, what we spend for everything increases year over year, that a flat state aid from last year is actually a really bad thing. And I know that's what Jill shared today, that the article says remain flat and that there is some truth fought from last year. But the reality is that's almost $600,000 less than what we thought we were getting just a couple of months ago.
You've said also, that kind of essentially puts us at, if that's the only number, that's the issue, at what, around what our contingent budget would have been anyway, right?
Actually, I was thinking that too. It's pretty close to that, what we would be for contingent, because...
Right, because the amount of the tax levy would have been reduced back to what it was last year, but don't forget, we haven't passed a budget yet. So that is a possibility as well. I don't want to say it out loud. But you know, that's always a possibility, that a contingency budget happens and it's not going to be either or. It could be one or both.
I think the amount is about the same what the contingency budget was.
Yep, that's true.
Yeah, I think the uniqueness of the situation is, is what Joe's point is that the contingent budget would almost be exactly the same as what our proposed budget would have to be.
Yeah, which is devastating to the budget because there's, it's not, there's not one particular area or something I can think of that would be able, you know, that we could, that we could just shave off. There's nothing that has anywhere near that number that would, it's going to be difficult. It's going to be very difficult.
Right, well, our worst-case scenario just became a reality is where we are.
Yep.
And I, you know, while we still don't know, I do think we're all smart enough to realize we're not going to get everything we thought we would get for this year. And we have taxpayers that are not going to be in their same fiscal position they were when this all started. So I would imagine, you know, Jill, when you use the expression "go back to the drawing board", Jeremy, you really, I think, need at this point, and directed from the board, would be to talk to the principals and all of the department heads, what hard decisions are we making in our budget? Because there are going to have to be some made, maybe not as draconianly as as we hope, hopefully not, or as we fear. But I can't imagine we're not going to have to make some cuts we didn't expect. And we shouldn't be reacting. Let's try to do that while the high school is still putting together their schedule. I know course selection's been delayed from all of this. This is the time to look at all of that.
I agree. The economy's being hit, as we all know, and we need to be financial stewards on that and look into it even deeper.
I just want to say, I do think we had a fiscally responsible budget, but the playing field just changed for a lot of the people in our community.
Right, and maybe the benefit for us is because budgets have been so responsible as of late, I know something Jill shared last meeting was the fact that our average price paid by homeowners is still less than it was five years ago. And I know that's something where I think that people recognize that as the efforts of the board to keep budgets responsible because they're actually paying still less money in taxes than they were five years ago.
Right.
And we also do need to, I mean, I shouldn't say hope, but plan for, think about the timing of recovery. It's probably, you know, nobody's, I should say, nobody. Not most people are thinking it's going to be a skyrocket right back to where we were once we kind of get through a summer and early fall. But we, there will be some recovery and the idea of, I mean, and I'm not trying to belittle any of it, just tax bills go out in October as opposed to, they're not going out tomorrow. So there's definitely timing that plays into our thinking as well.
I think the other thing we have to be cognizant of is our number where we're going to get aid on next year is now going to be $600,000 lower than it would otherwise been. So there's a compounding.
Right, I was going to say, we don't know what this means for aid for next year and I'm certainly sure they're not going to double up on what they didn't give us this year. You know, we may be able to make some headway with what we didn't spend at the end of this year to make up for some of that aid for next year, but that's a one-time thing. And then next year, we're still in the same boat with the new aid figure coming out. I'd also point out that our TRS expenses, which is one of the highest expenses we have, it's our pension expense for teachers on teacher salaries. That's going to be affected by this, not next year, but the year after, big time when the, because of the market situations that are happening right now. And we're going to see a big jump in the pension costs.
Because we had to make up the difference that the market doesn't, right?
Right, so there's a lot of those types of things that we need to be thoughtful about when planning for not just the current year's budget that we're planning for, but a couple of years out. You know, I know we did those projections, which have now all been, are going to be skewed as well. If, you know, I mean, depending on how this all turns out and if it's over quicker than we expected to, great. But if it's not, it could have a long-term effect.
And the concerning piece to me is when we're making our budget for the 21, 22 school year, by then, we'll be $1.2 million in the hole. Right, because we would have lost $600,000 this year, plus the, we'll be $600,000 behind going forward.
Right, there's no way he's going to make up for it and they're already thinking about ways to, you know, take out money for the stimulus package from people's aid and they're not replacing it, they're just calling it something different. They're pulling it out of one line and calling it, you know, pandemic aid and it's just another type of shell game, but it's what they have to do to make it balance, I guess, so.
It's almost a new gap.
Exactly, a new gap elimination aid in our face, right? And that's how we're handling it.
The state of New York is in serious financial problems and that's our problem.
Right.
Basically, a negative revenue compared to their expenses. And we're going to be paying penalties for that.
All school districts.
That means, yes.
Yeah.
I meant we, I meant everyone, but this.
And I think as it's always been our job, we're very proud of the programs and services we offer the students of Putnam Valley and especially those we've put in place the last, I would say, five to 10 years. But now is all, and we certainly don't want to lose any of those good programs, but I think we have to look at everything that is not anywhere that we can, if it's not ideal, but still work. Is that, am I making clearly? We have to make some very smart, as smartly unpainful decisions as possible. Class sizes may move up in the high school, for example, or may move up in the middle school to rearrange things. We have to really look at everything that doesn't decimate all the good work we've done.
Right. Which is why I like your idea of going back to the principals and saying, okay, what could you live without and still have a great program?
That'll be one of the agenda items on our meeting tomorrow.
Okay, good. Right. I know there had been some questions presented in the public comment. Dr. Lott, are we going to do that in public comment?
Well, I guess they're all related to budgets, so we could do it.
They are, that's what I was thinking.
We've answered a bunch of them already, but yeah.
Yeah, so the first question asks about the financial impacts of the pandemic. So I know we spoke about that. New York State is predicting, I think last I saw, is a $15 billion deficit. I know that state aid takes up 26% of the state's budget, so they can't possibly make up a $15 million hole without impacting state aid, given that we're such a large chunk of the overall budget, so.
And you said billion, didn't you? 15 billion?
Billion.
Yes.
So there was questions about, obviously, recognizing some savings during the closure period. I think that's somewhat of a moving target. We had spoke earlier about, we're not sure how long it'll last and that'll obviously have a direct impact. We're saving in somewhere, in some ways, and spending in others. So it'll be interesting to see how that all shakes out or though we certainly anticipate there could be some sense of savings when this is all said and done, but certainly not to the extent that it'll offset the $500,000 we're losing in state aid. Obviously, we're going to start looking, or we have already started looking at opportunities for reductions. There was a question asking if we're able to recognize any cost reductions of school close. We already said that. So contracts and heating oil and other things of such, we're obviously saving on those. There's a question about, will have vendors been willing to work with us? I think we're, that's something that we're continuing to do. Again, without knowing when this is going to be over, it's hard to renegotiate or negotiate contracts because you're almost right now negotiating in a two-week window since we only have two weeks of assurances at the time. So we have not yet been doing a lot of that and I think we're, we have lots of questions to the state in terms of what happens with aid or other things like that, if we pay or do not pay contracts. So those are obviously daily conversations we're having internally and with our school attorneys. So those conversations, if we knew now that schools were closed for an extended period of time, it would certainly make it easier for us to make those decisions than only knowing two weeks at a time.
Right, and these are all similar questions that I, we discussed on the panel today. So no one else is like, having the answers that we don't have. We are all in the same, we all have the same questions that have been unanswered to date, so.
Yeah, so I think we pretty much covered the other two questions again about realizing savings through the spring and about what the impact of the pandemic is on state and federal levels. And again, we already spoke about the deficit that New York State is facing, so.
I'm concerned for school districts in general, but obviously for us specifically, all these contracts, with everything that we've, every contract that every school district has, if those contracts, not that they shouldn't get opened up or examined, but there are lawsuits waiting to happen all over the place depending on, you know, what the power the governor actually has to implement things for us, the school districts have to deal with when they already have contracts. We have to be very cautious in that and working with whoever we need to, if we're looking to renegotiate anything, that, you know, we try not to just be unilateral about kind of decisions. It's very, I think there's a cautiousness that needs to be played because, you know, for that, you can see, I can see lawsuits throughout the state or nationwide for all kinds of things in the next 10 years because that's just the nature of the business. I mean, you see all these television ads for, you know, for all kinds of different things. If you are affected by this, join this lawsuit. I mean, so I, not that I think it's going to get to that level, but there's definitely things that we need to be, not wary of, but just very much aware of.
I mean, I think we can get into, Jill, should we get into a few of the specifics that, the ones that we're struggling with?
Sure.
So I know like one obvious one is our transportation contract. So we have to make a decision whether we're going to pay that contract and it obviously hits, right? It's impacting many local residents who would otherwise get paid by the contractor. But like my main question is, if I spend that money on transportation services that aren't necessarily being rendered, am I guaranteed to get transportation aid back from the state? Because what I can't do is expend the money for the contract and not get the aid back. It's like, it would be like spending the money twice. So that's an example. I know our food services, and I want to commend our food services. They were ready day one for this, to start serving food for our students, but they make money based upon the number of meals they serve. That's what their contract says. Now, there is obviously no pandemic clause for what happened. Now, there is obviously no pandemic clause for what happens when you can, when you no longer have students in school to serve food to, and they're doing everything they can to serve as many meals as they can, but obviously there's no comparison to what they would otherwise be making. And I think the, the other piece, just to recognize is, because we're still going on this premise that schools could open on, on April 15th. We have coaches that are still doing virtual training sessions with our student athletes. We have clubs that are still running. We have all these other extracurricular after school activities because technically, as far as we know, and regardless of what we think may happen in the future, if schools open on April 15th, there's still a spring sports season. So we can't just tell our coaches we're not paying them. So there's a lot of things that are sort of up in the air because of the fact that we're, we're doing this two weeks at a time thing. And, and we need, we need a, a longer range perspective to make decisions on what to do.
Right. And I think it's closing in on us though, because the contractors want to know uh, what the answers are. They have to do, uh, still continue to pay their um, upkeep of their equipment and their um, you know, who are they gonna main, who are they gonna be able to retain on their staff? Uh, when they do come back, if they do come back, and who's gonna pay for their insurances and all of the things that are involved in becoming ha- being an organization. Um, so I think by midweek next week, we are going to be um, having to make those decisions um, about next month's bill, because it's April and they're used to getting a check, and they're going to want to know where it is and what are we doing to, what is everybody doing? We're hoping that we get some kind of an executive order um, from the governor's office telling us because we want to be guaranteed our aid and not find out later that we're not getting it, so.
And what is the, do we have a sense that at April 15th, they're going to keep doing these two weeks at a time? Um, closure?
Sounds like.
Yeah. Right now, you know, overriding all this is you got the federal government which says it's going to April 30th.
Right.
Game in place. So once the state, you know, they're going to be forced to keep us closed.
Jeremy, at one point in terms, you mentioned the extracurricular, and one of the questions mentioned the extracurricular activities in the spring coaching season. Are we going to start, are we going to look to section one to possibly make a decision to cancel the season regardless, particularly if we're only coming back May 1st?
So section one just met earlier this week, and they're sort of following the governor's um, timeline. So the section one has postponed all athletics until April 15th. And then after, and then they're scheduled to meet again, and um, and they can go from there. I'm actually gonna, hold on. I'm gonna, Brian's on the, on the meeting. I'm gonna send him in here because he can speak more specifics to the athletics piece.
Me?
Yep, we hear you, Brian.
Um.
We can hear you.
We hear you. We don't see you yet, but that's fine. We know.
That's too bad.
Oh, now we're fine.
How are you?
Hi, Brian.
Hi.
Or in New York. Everybody's um, hanging in there. Certainly a unique challenge here. Um, just to kind of reiterate what Jeremy was saying, we've been speaking pretty much every day. Um, so many things are up in the air. I mean, you, you're all dealing with more than I am as far as just the unknowns, right? Uh, tomorrow, I'm meeting with the championship committee again, and that committee was tasked to try to come up with some sort of a timeline or what a spring season might look like. So, you know, if we come back on such and such a date, we'll be able to do this. And if we come back even later, then, you know, maybe we'll only be able to do this, and um, we're looking for guidance from the state as far as what is too late to have a championship? As far as a state championship or anything along those lines. Um, there is chatter about do certain school districts or sections um, give up that potential state championship sooner than later in order to try to get as many athletes on a field uh, as possible, um, just so that they can go out there and play. Um, there's also talk about, you know, if we do have some sort of a shortened season, will we um, get into a playoff scenario, whatever that happens to look like, and then do all of the other teams that maybe don't make it continue to play, just to try to get these kids um, out there to enjoy the sport that they love and uh, be able to compete. Um, so all of these different scenarios are, are playing out, and we're trying to figure it out. But again, it's, it's very difficult with so many unknowns. You know, I could go on. I don't, I don't, I know.
So Brian, the technically, what is the um, pre-COVID-19, what is the technical end to the spring season? The regular season?
Uh, this, so each sport kind of varies a little bit, but I mean, you could see if, if boys lacrosse, for example, went all the way through the state, I only remember that because I know it's so late, is into June. Um, so I don't, I don't know if this is what you're getting at or not, but we can push the entire season back, or at least what we can salvage from the season back. Uh, the concern there, and uh, Jeremy is well aware of this, is that the schools, if they come back, there's going to be so much to be made up. I, I don't know if there's any plays going to happen or anything like that, but you have proms and graduation ceremonies and all these different things that schools are going to try to be cramming in, and we're, we're very well aware of that. We have superintendents also on the executive committee, which helps. Um, so we're, you know, I don't know if that's where you were going.
I would kind of think along the lines of, as far as a regular season, if there were no, there were no going to playoffs, and I know they end in different times.
Right.
You know, we are really only talking till middle to late May for regular season games before playoffs, right?
Correct, yeah.
So even if we started on April 16th, because the, the doors have been lifted wide open, nobody's going to be starting a game that next week or that week, right? I mean, there's not going to be, you know, probably not very likely, it might be the week after.
Right.
And, and you know, while I want kids to be able to do whatever they can do, I would be concerned about very little practice at all and the possibility of injuries because they're not conditioned as they might have been with three weeks or whatever of practice. Um, and then you're only looking at a compressed schedule of maybe three to six weeks.
Right. So just to speak to the safety aspect, there are um, state guidelines for that. Most of the uh, sports that we have this season, there's a six day requirement before scrimmages or practices, and then um, 10 days for baseball and things like that. So that would have to play out before there would be contests and things like that. Yep.
Are there any, are there, are you getting any kind of uh, guidance as to the kind of social distancing? I mean, if we go back to school, but they, they still advise people to not be in close bodily contact and all that kind of stuff, but you're playing a contact sport, are they giving you, are athletes getting any more scrutiny or more uh, regulations in terms of that kind of thing?
I haven't heard anything specific to athletics as far as uh, that piece, you know, contact and things of that nature. I think there's so many other things right now that are up in the air that that hasn't really come up as, as a, you know, it's down on the priority list at this time. Um, I think when we get to that point where it's okay, um, if we, if we can come back April 16th, we may have to address something like that. You know, if we come back in May, um, again, it shifts all of this thinking around a lot, but it may impact, you know, maybe we're more in the clear and it's less of an issue, you know, it, you, you just don't know. Um, it's something good to think about. Bless you.
Excuse me.
But um, that particular question hasn't come up, no.
Okay.
Because I think everybody is almost afraid to say we won't be back April 15th, even though I don't think everybody believes we'll be back.
Right. So I emailed um, all the coaches just to check in yesterday, and um, right into my email, I, I said, you know, currently we're scheduled to come back on the 16th, but you know, all predictions are saying that that's going to be at the height or peak of, of everything that's going on. I just, I personally don't see it, unfortunately. I'm ready to come back, believe me. Um, but, you know, we, we've got to be looking at a couple of weeks beyond April 16th. I, I would be shocked if we came back. Um, it's just unfortunate, but um, the good news, you know, is we're not, we're not all seeing it, uh, but the coaches are doing a really great job, and um, they're interacting and sending videos and collecting data from the teams, and they're trying to be as engaged as possible. It's challenging. We have 13 new coaches this season. Um, so really, we don't even know each other, you know, we've met and interviewed and board approved, and then they had a couple of days of practice, and that's it. So we're, we're trying to get to know each other through email as much as possible and encourage them to be um, what we would expect out of a good coach for our community, and I think they're all trying to do that. Um, on the same line, I know the PE and health teachers are reaching out. They're vital in this time as far as wellness and health and mental um, you know, positive energy and so on and so forth, and um, they're really doing a great job.
And I would assume, Brian and, and Jeremy, that the work the coaches are doing with individual athletes is more about individual working out, training, looking at videos. We're not doing anything that's going to encourage that breaking of social distancing.
Correct. That's correct. We um, there was actually an article that uh, Timmy Weir um, was quoted, and the article came out about a week after um, we all implemented the social distancing, and it said that he was encouraging captains' practices, and um, that was unfortunate that the article didn't come out on time because it looked like we were trying to encourage that, and we're certainly not. All the coaches know that they're not supposed to be doing that. You know, hopefully everybody's abiding by that so we can get back and, and, you know, um, slow this thing down and get back to school.
Right.
Um, everybody that I've talked to is ready to come back, so um, hopefully they're doing the right thing.
Or is that pretty much, would you say, Jeremy, we've um, to what, to the extent that we can, we've addressed the questions?
Yep.
That were submitted by the public, and certainly as we get more answers, Jill said, you know, as Jill said, I think more information's going to come each week. If you think about what we knew and heard from the governor last Thursday, it was very different than what we know now. Um, and I imagine that's going to be the case again next week, so.
We intend.
I do think, Jeremy, that you've kept the Putnam Valley community, school community up, up to, up to speed on what's happening. Um, your letters have been informative, and I think they've been good, people well received.
Thank you. I'd, I'd much rather have my buildings full of kids and not writing. We're doing the best we can.
We don't always get what we want.
That's true.
Something we'll need to look for, forward to is, because your communications to the school community um, are regular, and the, and the principals, their communication to parents is regular. Um, but the, the issue that we need to worry about is the community at large, because right now, probably most of their news uh, will come from social media, um, and we need to um, make sure in, at some level that we get, make sure that your messages are getting out um, to the community at large, because um, questions that we, we have are definitely going to be questions that the community has. And while there's a lot more people home to be able to watch a meeting like this, so welcome. Um, other than that, I think, you know, that there's going to be, um, people will be probably a lot more engaged in this cycle than have been in others. We need to make sure that we're engaging the broader community. If that requires doing additional mail that gets to everybody, um, and that's something we need to do, even if it's a postcard to a special website. You know, something along those lines. We need to figure out ways to, to get our message out to everybody else.
Sure. So we did recently, we filmed a new episode of uh, Inside Putnam Valley Schools. So I know that goes out on the, on the public access, and I know there's been a couple of articles written in the paper. I also wanted to note that the email address that was set up for this meeting for questions will stay open. So if anyone has questions following the meeting, they can certainly reach out. And I know that we're, we were in the process of creating a newsletter that goes out to the entire community, and then with the timeline changing, uh, we, we have sort of bought a little more time, but there will be a newsletter going out to the entire community before the budget. And we always highlight some of the um, things that are going on in the district besides just the budget information, uh, which would be included.
Yeah, and I'm going to proceed to take the budget down off of the website that I, that I put up this week um, so that people aren't looking at it and, and then have bad information when they come back next time. And I'm just, I just want to say though, that we do, if, unless they change that June date or make it late June uh, for a vote, um, we really do only, it's only a two week difference between when we were supposed to vote to when we may have to vote. So um, some of these decisions about the budget may need to be made sooner, but I, I'm hoping they even push the vote date a little later, because I don't know how we're going to be able to make those decisions before the end of April. Just mentioning that again.
All right. Uh, Dr. Left, I guess we're rolling right into your superintendent's report, which probably has some of this stuff in it.
Certainly did. Um, I, I just want to start by recognizing some people. Um, I know I, I usually start by recognizing our staff, but as this COVID-19 thing, pandemic continues to spread, I find myself, my mind wandering more and more to friends and family members that work in, I mean, in healthcare, in hospitals, and nurses, and doctors, and I had the opportunity to speak to uh, one of my good friends who's a doctor down in Columbia the other day, and she was sort of filling me in on, on what it's like being in a hospital in New York City, and and the numbers of days you're there in a row, and, and what it's like going home to your family, and almost not wanting to be near your family um, for fear of, of contaminating. So um, I just wanted to sort of take an opportunity to recognize, I'm sure in Putnam Valley, we have a large number of healthcare professionals and first responders and, and other, and anyone else who is working to keep um, the shelves in the grocery store stocked, um, so people can buy as much toilet paper as they can fit in their basement and all the other essentials. And just to keep some sense of normalcy in what is probably the least normal period of time of anyone's life. So I did want to take an opportunity just to recognize those individuals that are going to work every day, that are on the front lines, that are doing everything they can possibly do to keep us well. Um, and so I wanted to start with that. And then obviously, I, I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize our own uh, teachers, our students, our parents, administrators. I think everyone's doing a fantastic job in a terrible situation to do everything they can to make sure that we're providing students with opportunities to learn, because this will be over one day. And when that day comes, our students do not get to, to make up what was missed during the spring semester. They're expected to move forward to the next year and start to master new standards that we know are based upon the standards they should be learning now, so. Um, it's important that we continue to push forward, and we continue to find ways to make sure we're educating all of our students. And I think all of those teachers, students, parents, and our administrators are doing a fantastic job of doing that so far. We also want to recognize our services. Our food service again continues to serve meals and deliver meals to our students and families who need them. Our custodial services are here every day, um, cleaning buildings, doing projects, uh, really making sure that these facilities are ready to reopen one day. Uh, our technology department again this week was here on Wednesday for anyone who didn't initially want a laptop and now decided it's too hard to share, that um, I know we were continuing to hand out devices, and again, they're constantly in and doing work. So I just want to recognize the efforts of the Putnam Valley community as a whole, and I think there's something special about the community. Um, we've had more than our share of crises over the past few years, and I think it's something from the day I arrived in Putnam Valley, it's always impressed me, is how this community comes together to support each other. And I know that's happening. And I know that's happening and I know people are rising to the occasion. So I just want to acknowledge sort of the community as a whole for all of, all the things that they are doing for their neighbors, for their families and for their community. As the governor mentioned his last executive order, he ordered schools to remain open, I mean, closed through April 15th. And as by now everyone's aware, that included cancellation of any spring breaks. So later in this meeting, we will be passing a resolution essentially rescinding our spring break and, and any remaining snow days that we have as per the executive order. And, but we plan to continue, obviously, distance learning through next week as I addressed in my, my letter. The childcare will continue and we'll continue to provide meals for those students who need them. With the one caveat being on Wednesday, we're going to do a bulk meal distribution. So on Wednesday, families can pick up meals for Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, all at one, one location. And I did want to quickly recognize Lisa from Once Upon a Time down in the center of town. She partnered with the school district and opened up her building just for the children of first responders and essential healthcare personnel that the district is placing there. So the last thing that we want is any of those individuals unable to report to work because they need someone to watch their children. So she was kind enough to partner with us and get her staff to go in. I want to recognize our nurses, our school nurses are there every morning, Kathy, Tish, and Jackie. First morning, all three of them showed up just to get to know the students and to introduce themselves. And I know they've been taking turns, they check every student and, and healthcare worker into the facility to make sure that they don't have a fever and they're doing well. So I want to recognize all the individuals that are associated with that program. And I know Jeanette and Natalie have been instrumental in getting that up and running. So I thank them both as well. I guess the last piece or last two pieces are, we know that we're looking at serious financial repercussions of this coronavirus and the fact that businesses essentially stopped in many ways. And it's, there's going to be painful decisions that have to be made between now and when the budget comes about. And certainly we're going to do everything we can to make those in any way possible to not impact personnel and program. But I think the reality is, is that there's no way we've reached that number without having to look at those two buckets. And I know we mentioned before the construction project continues. I just wanted to note that is, we filed an appeal and we were notified by the state that we were allowed to continue. Part of the issue is that, of that was, we started our construction project when the construction was still not capped by the governor. And then when all construction was shut down, that left us in a situation where we couldn't realistically open the middle school because it was, half the construction wasn't on half. But we had started the construction, we had holes and floors and ceilings were down. So right now, I know certainly our priority is to finish those essential services. We're doing the asbestos abatement, those guys walk around hazmat seats anyway. We're doing the, replacing the water main or moving the water main and doing the HVAC work in the backfield. But each of our contractors has, has expressed the willingness to continue working. We had each contractor update their safety plan. So everyone had to submit a new sort of COVID-19 compliance safety plan where they acknowledged no social distancing, there's not more than, no more construction workers here at anyone given time that need to be here. They wear masks and gloves when they're in close proximity of each other. So we have lots of measures in place. So I don't want people to think that, because if you're driving down the road and you see a piece of machinery moving, that we have hundreds of construction workers here on campus. The number is much, much lower, probably like 12, spread across two buildings and outside. And they're all practicing what we know to be the preventive measures to keep themselves safe as well. So that'll, well, once we finish this essential work, we'll, we'll continue to have a conversation in terms of how far we want to go. And that obviously will depend upon where we are in terms of the virus and what our expectations are for when school is going to open. So we know right now, if we needed to open school on April 15th, we could. And then we'll readjust after that date passed us. That's it. Thank you.
You're on mute, Janine.
I got you.
Background noise was making it a little bit hard, so I'm sorry.
For that entire time.
You were not on mute, I was on mute, so I could hear you better. The, and I've lost my train of thought. Completely, oh, do we have, it's public contribution, contribution time. Do we have any new, I don't see any new questions from the public?
No new comments.
Okay, anything from the board? All right, so at this point, let's move on to new business. And we are, because it's going to be difficult to hear the five or however many eyes, we will do a roll call vote for each of the new agenda items. So Mr. Ferraro, can I ask you to start with number one?
Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby suspends the provisions of Board Policy 1230, Public Participation at Board of Education Meetings and the provisions of Policy 2350, Board of Education Meetings Procedures Regarding Public Meetings, Video Conferencing, and Public Participation at Meetings for Tonight's Board Meeting, and until Governor Cuomo determines that a state of emergency no longer exists in the New York, in New York State due to COVID-19.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor? Mr. Ferraro?
Aye.
Mrs. Jetter?
Aye.
Mrs. Parmley?
Aye.
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Number two.
Resolved on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to amend Policy 4770 graduation requirements and waive a second reading by suspending the requirement of 40 hours of community service for the class of 2020 due to the state of emergency in the state of New York due to the coronavirus COVID-19 epidemic. Policy referenced in official minutes of this meeting as Document Number 162-20.
Second. Questions or comments?
I have a question. I'd like to see, even though we're going to rescind, I'd like to see what percentage of this, of the senior class has and hasn't satisfied their numbers. I'm sure there's tons that have satisfied, more than satisfied their numbers and what we're looking at for those that did not.
I can see what I can, what we can get.
All in favor? Mr. Ferraro?
Yay.
Miss Jetter, Mrs. Jetter?
Aye.
Aye.
Mrs. Parmley?
Aye.
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Number three. Resolved on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to provide childcare services for up to 12 children, kindergarten through grade five of first responders and/or healthcare workers who reside in the district with Once Upon a Time childcare for a total fee not to exceed $840 per day effective Monday, March 30th, 2020, through a date to be determined by the superintendent in his discretion, but no later than the end of the 2019-20 school year or withdrawal of the declaration of emergency due to the COVID-19 pandemic in the state of New York, whichever comes sooner. Second. Questions or comments? So, go ahead.
So if, if this goes on through the summer, we will not be responsible for taking them in this, providing childcare in the summer, or we will?
I have not heard that we would be. I don't know.
Normally, they're, normally their children are not going to school during the summer.
Right.
The reason we're providing services is because normally their children are in school.
Right.
I know, Mr. Left, there are, Dr. Left, we've, we've talked that there are districts that are doing this on a fee service. Parents are paying a fee. There's a lot of different formulas. Since, are we kind of reviewing and revisiting every couple of weeks based on, like right now, we're operating like it's April 15th? Are we going to look again at that point?
Yeah, I mean, I think we're continually looking. And most districts are certainly in, have done what we did was partner with a community-based organization. I only know of one where they're, they're charging. And really small, a couple of really small districts are doing in-house. But that has its own complication as well. So we certainly, I mean, the contract's written in a way where we can always revisit it and as can our partner. If they decide that it's more than they're willing to do, we could be back to the drawing board again. So it's something we'll continue to monitor.
Okay, calling for a vote. All in favor? Mr. Ferraro?
Aye.
Mrs. Jetter?
Aye.
Mrs. Parmley?
Aye.
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
And I vote aye. And my order is the way you are on my screen. There's no rhyme or reason, so. Moving on to number four.
Resolved on the recommendation of Superintendent of Schools to adopt the revised code of conduct for the district. As per Document 156/20, attach the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Just so the community, if anyone's, you know, has time and they go into the policies, this is Policy 5300 and Policy 0115.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're doing the Mr. Ferraro thing. It's better, it's a muscle memory, Mrs. Cohen. Mrs. Jetter?
Aye.
We already heard from Mrs. Parmley, Mrs. Cohen, Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Aye. Number five.
Resolved on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve the contract for cooperative educations, educational services with Southern Westchester Bosse's for the 2020 to 2025 school years as per Document Number 157/20. Attach the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second. Questions or comments?
For the community, Southwest Bosse's supplies us with computer services, helps us with computer services.
All in favor? Mr. Ferraro?
Yay.
Mrs. Jetter?
Aye.
Mrs. Cohen, Mrs. Parmley?
Aye.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
And aye for Mrs. Ruffo. Number six.
Resolved on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to accept the resignation of Amanda Tibbetts, a teacher from the Putnam Valley Central School District effective June 26, 2020, as per Document Number 158-20, attach to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor? Mr. Ferraro?
Aye.
Mrs. Jetter?
Aye.
Mrs. Parmley?
Aye.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
And Mrs. Ruffo, yes. Number seven. Okay, whereas in response to the effects of the COVID-19 pandemic, the governor of the state of New York has called upon each public school district to assure that for the period commencing on April 1st, 2020 through April 14th, 2020, all weekdays shall be designated as student instructional days. And whereas there has been a mandate placed upon New York State public school districts to continuously provide food services and childcare services in accordance with their plans as submitted to the New York State Education Department in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Now therefore, be it resolved that the board hereby modifies the adopted 2019-2020 school district calendar by establishing the days of April 1st, 2020 through April 14th, 2020 as student instructional days, thereby changing April 6th, 2020 through April 13th, 2020 from spring recess days to student instructional days, while establishing May 22nd, 2020 as an additional instructional day, document referenced in the official minutes of this meeting as Document Number 159/20. And be it further resolved, in addition to implementing the district's continuity of learning plan during each of the weekdays commencing on April 1st, 2020, and through at least April 14th, 2020, the district shall continue its childcare services and food services plan as submitted to the New York State Education Department while awaiting further direction from the New York State government officials. Second. Questions or comments?
Jeremy, do we need to continue to be extending this every two weeks type of thing? Is not as far as the days of classes, but as far as the, the meal preparation and that type of thing? Or is it kind of open-ended to go along with the, the governor's directive?
I believe this is a one-time resolution aligned with the governor's directive to cancel all spring breaks.
And how does that, how does that work with our teacher contracts where they're supposed to be off that week?
It's an excellent question. We've already started having conversations with the union about it. And I think they've been supportive in, in the decisions we've made so far. And obviously that will continue as, as the year goes on and we see how long or how prolonged this closure period is.
I, I think we've read a lot of the governor's statements. The concern is if you announce a spring break, will it be difficult to keep children inside? Will that, will that send a message? As it's now time to stop social distancing? I think that was the crux of what I read in, in one of his directives. So, okay, all in favor? Mr. Ferraro?
Aye.
Mrs. Jetter?
Aye.
Mrs. Parmley?
Aye.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
And aye for Mrs. Ruffo. Number eight.
Resolved on recommendation, recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to award the bid for independent testing and inspection services, RFP Number 2019-20-06, to TestCon Incorporated, as per Document 160/20, attach the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments?
For the community, this group is going to help monitor the construction work that's being done at the middle school, high school complex.
All in favor? Mr. Ferraro?
Aye.
Mrs. Jetter?
Aye.
Mrs. Parmley?
Aye.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
And Mrs. Ruffo, aye. Number nine.
Resolved on the recommendation of Superintendent of Schools to award the kitchen equipment bid contract MS6 for the 2018 capital project to Singer Equipment Company, as per Document Number 16120, attach to the agenda at official minutes of this meeting.
Second. Questions or comments?
This is for the upgrade to the middle school kitchen and cafeteria area.
Okay. All in favor? Mr. Ferraro?
Aye.
Mrs. Jetter?
Aye.
Mrs. Parmley?
Aye.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Was that an aye, Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, it's an aye.
Sorry. And Mrs. Ruffo, aye. All right, I'm going to open it up. There's no further, I see no further comments on the Google Doc from the community. Anybody think from the board, anybody wants to add at this time? Or any of the, thank you administrators for being here virtually and in spirit? Okay, at which time?
Janine, did we need to talk about the 21st of April, our next meeting?
Our next board meeting.
Yeah.
So it's, are we assuming, Jeremy, we're operating like that? I mean, this is the whole complication. We're only, we're only being given directives until the 15th.
I would wager large sums of money that our next board meeting will be virtual.
And we are not, we, we've already, Jill already announced, we are not adopting our budget at this time.
And we may not be adopting Bosse's, voting on Bosse's budget either.
Okay.
And that's why we meet on the 21st on the Tuesday, so that may subject to change.
Well, we wouldn't change our meeting date even if we weren't voting on the Bosse's budget, right? We'd still meet the 21st or we'd move it to the 23rd, Thursday. Like, we already published it.
We utilize it as more time for the budget.
Yeah, we can certainly keep it to 21st. I think what we also had to talk about is the predominant agenda. I think what we also had to talk about is the predominant agenda on that day is our tenure acknowledgement and and retirement acknowledgement. Now, I'm certainly inclined, retirement acknowledgement can wait until June, closer to when people retire. But I I'm thinking that we probably should, at the very least, still have our resolution about awarding tenure to keep with that general timeline. Tenure's not technically granted until the first, is it the first day of school of the next year? But are, we usually recommend.
Depending on the contract, each of the contracts, but yeah.
Right, we usually recommend it and resolve it at that meeting. Anybody have any thoughts about, do we just have the agenda with the resolution, say a few words, and then have a celebration at another time? Any thoughts?
That sounds good to me, or that technically, that's all we're going to be able to do.
Right, I mean, we could put off awarding tenure, but I don't know, I don't want to, you know, I think we should keep things as uniform as possible.
And I think it's also in recognition, it's also in recognition of the staff. This is when we normally let them know that they are gaining tenure and we're going through with that. So there's nothing wrong with that.
Right. And then we'll just have to ask them to come to a board meeting and shake our hands when we're allowed to shake hands.
I mean, I think the discussion last time was about needing an additional meeting prior to that, when before we were going to go with a budget that we already had and we needed, maybe needed another to be able to adopt it in time, but that's not going to be our case, we don't need to do that.
Right. But are we going to need to meet? If some, if serious cuts are made to the budget, are we going to meet to discuss that? Or are we just going to wait until Jill presents it at a board meeting?
Yeah, we may, we may very well need to meet in between all of this because I can't, we can't say that right now. So May 5th, I noticed Maureen has another board meeting on a Tuesday, the one following that one. So there's two Tuesdays in a row. And we could end up having to have one in the middle of the two of them, depending on what guidance we get or don't, and just to hash out some of the budget items as well.
Right, particularly since, Dr. Luft, you're going to be talking to the administrators tomorrow about, go back to your budgets and look. All right, okay, so we will meet on the 21st at this point, on the Tuesday. We may or may not meet before then. Again, if we do, Mrs. Bellino, you'll post those meetings as per public notification laws. Anything else from anybody on the board? So I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the work session business meeting.
Second.
Second.
Questions or comments? I just want to, I think on behalf of the entire board and administration and staff, urge all family members and and community members to continue social distancing, take care of your families, and be well. Hopefully, we'll be together in reality soon, not just virtually.
Great.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody.